Okay, good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, June 22 regular and public hearing, regular meeting and public hearings of the Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission. We welcome the presence of the public. Your involvement is reflective of community interest in our, in what we do and we want to thank you very much for your participation. And similarly by extension, we make the same comments toward those of you watching at home. Thank you very much for your interest in our proceedings. We do have a full agenda this evening. We are under the threat of a tornado watch. In the event that that escalates to something more serious, we have been advised by council and village staff that we will bring these proceedings to an immediate closure and resume them at an appropriate time should we have to go down that path. Sonia, would you kindly call the roll?
Certainly. Chairman Quachera?
Present.
Commissioner Gary?
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Present.
Commissioner Pelletier? Commissioner Lesniak is absent. And Commissioner Mateo, are you there?
I am.
All right, Commissioner Mateo is joining us telephonically remotely due to a work, out-of-town work conflict, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, commissioners, do you recognize Commissioner Mateo?
Yes.
We do.
Okay, so Commissioner Mateo will also be counted as here. We do have a quorum.
Great. Sonia, thank you kindly. Item three on the agenda is approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting and public hearing minutes of May 25. These were provided to us by staff. Any, do I have a motion to approve those?
Oh, second.
Okay, discussion. Noting none, then may I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Would you kindly call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Gary?
Aye, yai.
Commissioner Mateo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item four, visitor petition, citizen request and communications. Would invite the public to make any comments. Would you have anything to mention to us this evening?
I am the petitioner at 221 Lawton, so I'm just here on that for petition.
Great, thank you very kindly for attending and when we get to that item in the agenda, we'd be pleased to incorporate you into the public hearing. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Sonia, do you have any liaison related comments from trustee Pollock this evening?
The petitioner from 238 Scottswood is anxiously awaiting our decision on variation standards. The board did table the vote on that particular variation for the front porch pending the outcome of any text amendments related to variation standards. So, just to let you know that they are anxious for that particular outcome. They tabled it to the first meeting in July, so we are shooting to have both the text amendment for the variation standards on that agenda as well as the discussion, further discussion on that variation that was submitted. So, just so you're aware of that upcoming discussion and to kind of have it on your radar screen, that's going to be the first meeting in July.
Do we have a date for that?
That would be July, one moment, calendar, that is going to be July 7.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any other items to bring us from the board?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Then, at this point, we can proceed to the first of three public hearings that we'd like to conduct this evening. The first concerns a property at 225 Lawton. This is a request for variation. And at this point, I would like to open that public hearing. Sonia, would you kindly, well, first let me call it to order?
We'll get a motion in a second.
Do I have a motion to open that public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All aye.
Sonia, would you kindly call the roll?
All in favor was.
Oh, is that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm just trying, following attorney Mars's prescribed approach, so just want to make sure we.
Yeah, you can open a public hearing with a voiceover, although roll call, nothing's ever wrong about a roll call.
Okay, I was just following his, I was following his script. Okay, very good. At this point, what we would like to do, based on advice from staff and council and presumably with the understanding of the petitioner, is to open this public hearing in accordance with the communications that have been made, but because there was an issue with notice of this public hearing, we do need to continue it to a future date.
Right, that's correct. My understanding, Sonia, is that there was a problem with the published notice?
No, the published notice happened, however, the mailing notification to the surrounding property owners did not.
Okay.
So, that needs to occur before we can actually discuss the case.
And so, we've opened the public hearing, but it would be improper to conduct the public hearing at this time. So, in order to avoid having to republish, we opened the public hearing and the suggestion would be to have a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain. And my understanding is some dates have been floated, but that the only one that's really viable right now is July 14th, is that correct?
July 14th, I have three commissioners that are available to make it. The only one I have not heard back from is Commissioner Lesniak, so I do not know if he will be able to make that meeting or not. That is a Thursday, it's the second Thursday of the month. So, I don't know if we want to punt and assume that he can make it, or if we want to just continue to our regular meeting in July, which would be the 27th.
Question?
Yes.
Is there, do we know if there's any likelihood that the vacant position will be filled by then?
I have not heard that we've had any applicants, so.
Oh, none?
I wouldn't bank on it, in case of making sure that we're, we have a quorum for the meeting.
So, with respect to Commissioner Gary's question, with regard to replacement of, we're down.
We have a vacancy, yes.
We have a vacancy on planning and zoning. What is being done to fill that vacancy?
Oh, I believe an Eflash was put out and they did make an announcement at a village board meeting that we are looking for people to volunteer for planning and zoning commissioner.
Okay. Are, just to avoid any, being pretty conservative on this matter, are we in any way restricted from nominating individuals who we are aware of who may have a skillset to?
No, you certainly can contact them and see if they're interested and then advise them to fill out the application that's available on the village website to formally apply and maybe reach out to President Salz.
Well, you said that, if I have. As is work though.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to.
It's a little hard to understand, except.
Okay, very, very, I just wanted to ensure that there was no.
Impropriety.
Imppropriety with us recruiting.
No.
Those to fill that vacancy. Okay, very good. I would personally like to advance this matter as administratively quickly as we can for the benefit of the petitioner. And so, with respect to your question, punting versus, you know, trying to lock something in, since it sounds like we don't have a, we don't have a person in our back pocket to fill that vacancy at this point, I don't know that delaying that meeting to enable that onboarding to happen would be reason to delay the meeting any further. So, I guess my personal recommendation would be to try and shoot for the 14th and work with Commissioner Lesniak to lock him in.
Yeah, what could do is, if you're not sure you'll have a quorum, you could move to continue it to that date and then you'll pub, you'll post for that meeting. And if for some reason a quorum isn't attainable at that date, then we can post a notice by, as to when it's being continued to, which would probably be, if it fails, would probably be at that point the regular meeting, right?
Be the regular meeting.
But you could, you could do that and that would be acceptable.
Yep. My only concern with that would be is that we've already posted it, not that we have a crowd here, but, you know, we've posted, so it may create some confusion. So, then you would do a mailing that says the 14th.
Right.
And people are getting, you know, a mailed notice, but they would not get that same type of notification about the continuance.
Yeah, except, but that happens all the time where you don't, where you, something gets continued.
I'm not questioning whether it is appropriate or not, or acceptable or not. I just feel like it may cause more confusion rather than simply.
So, can we, can we do it this way? Can we, because I think what I'm hearing from Commissioner Pelletier is that what we would like to do is, if we're going to do a mailing, which we're obligated to do.
Right.
Let's, let's, let's conduct that mailing, or let's communicate in that mailing a date that we have a high degree of confidence we will have a quorum. So, the question becomes, can we make a motion to continue this public hearing to a date to be determined by state?
It has to be to a specific date.
That cannot be done.
No.
That's what I'm seeing. You can't do that. This, it's either 14 or 27 and you can work with 14 if it fails, but you can't leave it open.
We have to continue it.
To a date certain.
Here at the meeting to a specific date, otherwise I have to republish.
Which I mean is an option, but it's not completely expensive.
Right, and it's just difficult with how, when we have meetings and when the landmark publishes, we already have to publish it three weeks ahead of time. I don't know that we can meet the publication requirement and get anything before the 27th.
And so, can we ask the petitioner what their opinion is? Or not?
Yeah, I mean, you can.
Yeah.
Yes, so, as I mentioned, I'm the petitioner. My name is Luanne Harbeck and my, but also is co-petitioner. Our performance with the tri gets resolved as expeditionally as possible. I understand the needs for the publication and the quorum of the commission, so if there's any possibility that we can move it to the 14th, that would be our priority.
I move we continue to, but still, daily, July 14th.
I second that motion.
Okay.
And just to, just firm up the understanding here. So, if at some point between now and then, we learn that a quorum is not feasible to, to have.
Right. I will have to post a notice on the door, you know, and on the, our regular board and post it on the website that the meeting has been canceled and that it's been.
If you will have a quorum, then it will be continued to July 14th.
Okay, and so, so this commission does not need to physically meet on that date to, to further continue it. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Let's take a roll.
Let's take a roll.
Okay. Sonia, would you kindly take a roll then, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Gary?
Aye.
Commissioner Mateo?
So, the motion is to have the meeting on the 16th as long as Commissioner Lesniak can attend.
The 14th at 7.
Yes.
As long as Commissioner Lesniak can attend.
Right.
We don't know, only if he can attend.
Jill, I'm sorry, I apologize if you were unable to hear the discussion. Let me try and summarize it. So, we are unable to continue the public hearing to, to a date uncertain, so we must specify a date. The petitioner has kindly asked us to have the meeting as early as administratively possible. At this point, July 14th is the next earliest date, but we are unsure at this point if we will be able to have a quorum on that date. So, we are moving it, the motion is to move it to the 14th of July. If between now and then staff learns that a quorum is not available on that date, then notice would be, proper notification would be made that the continuation will be to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is July 27th.
Right, thank you. I just wanted to clarify what we were voting on.
Yeah.
So, aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Chairman Quachera?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Administrative question, attorney Molina, do I need to close this or?
Oh, we don't.
No, no, no gavel.
No.
No, okay.
Move on to the next one.
All right, great. Then, thank you very kindly. You're certainly welcome to watch how these proceedings happen. Thank you very much for, for coming. On behalf of the commission staff, we're, sorry for the administrative snafu, but, but thank you very kindly for your interest in, in further investing in your property and, and developing Riverside. So, thank you very kindly.
Certainly, I appreciate everyone's willingness to hold a special meeting. I know this is a curfew session and it takes time out of your very busy schedule, so I certainly appreciate that on behalf of the River Commission.
You're kindly welcome. Thank you. Okay, then moving on to item 6B on the agenda this evening. This is a continuation of the public hearing first opened on May 25th to consider a request for text amendments to the zoning ordinance governing vacation rentals. Do I have a motion to, do I, do I need to reopen that?
The public hearing is open. You opened it and now we can just continue the discussion.
Great. Then, at this point, I would like to ask Sonia to please bring us up to date and help us understand the action you would like us to take this evening.
Yes, as you know, we discussed the proposed text amendments last month at our meeting. Some of the commissioners had expressed some concerns about allowing vacation rentals in our residential districts and you voted to continue the public hearing to today. Staff has added, based on some of the comments that you provided, a requirement that a unit not be rented for more than 60 days in a calendar year to try to address some of the concerns about transancy in our residential neighborhoods. This would limit licensees to approximately two weekends per month that they could rent out their property as a vacation rental. The revised text amendment and a copy of the zoning map were included in your packet. There was also a copy of an article about how you can report complaints on Airbnb about hosts and/or the guests, you know, with the issues that there have been about parties and things like that recently with people using Airbnb. So, that is also attached for your reference. The vacation rentals text amendment for the zoning code includes adding a definition. A dwelling unit or portion thereof offered for rent for a period not to exceed 30 consecutive days to any person other than a member of the owner's family. The term vacation rental shall not include hotels or motels or bed and breakfasts. Vacation rentals are further regulated in, under business regulations and we are also proposing to create a whole new chapter under business regulations specific to vacation rentals. And you have that information in your packet as well. So, we add a definition to the zoning code. We will also add that use to the use tables for the residential and business districts. We are still proposing that they would be permitted uses in the business districts, however, they would be special uses in any of the residential districts. There's also an added requirement for parking for vacation rentals that would be added to the parking table in chapter eight. Chapter eight? Yes, chapter eight. And that would be that we would require there to be one space plus one space per rental unit or where somebody is going to be renting out multiple rooms within their houses to separate guests. You know, so say they have two different parties that would be staying in their house, they'd be renting out two rooms. They would be required to provide an additional space for each room as opposed to just one space for the unit as a whole.
That's in section eight?
That would be added to table eight, which is section, in section 10-8-9, required off-street parking spaces.
Got it.
So, those are the zoning text amendments that are before you this evening and they would all reference the new regulations that would be under the business regulations that the village board would have to adopt for the municipal code as well.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
So, at this point, I guess a couple of comments from, from my perspective. So, again, summarizing the discussion from our, our previous meeting, we did review draft language that was prepared for us. We subsequently provided to staff comments that we individually had on that original draft and to the best of my ability to understand what the net of those changes have been from the first draft, it, the, the biggest material change that I can see is that in, on the first page of the proposed language in red under section 326, 3-26-4B3, a provision was added that no vacation rental licensee shall rent the property as a vacation rental for more than 60 days in a calendar year. So, one of the discussion threads in our previous meeting was concern about intensity of use and so forth. And I'm inferring from, from this that this was an attempt by staff and the attorney to address that concern, to manage the intensity of the use by putting in a restriction. My question, when I see things like this, especially in this scenario, is how does something like that, how would staff enforce something like that? So, it's the enforceability of that that I think is, is a question that we need to explore.
They are required to provide us with their guest list, I believe, so that is something that we can check with.
They're required to keep one, but there's nothing in here that says.
We can request it, though.
Okay.
So, if we have some concern, we can always request a copy of that guest list and to verify that they are meeting that 60-day requirement.
I don't mean to be funny, but that's not a notarized list, correct?
Yeah, but what also can be done is because typically, and this can be gotten around, however, typically the people that use this, that do this tend to be and use one of the recognized sites like Airbnb. And Airbnb, they actually don't exchange any money. As a matter of fact, one, one community that I work with passed regulations that impose the hotel motel tax on these. And Airbnb actually collects those for municipalities if you request it. So, the point being is Airbnb collects all the money. They have very detailed records about usage and dates and so we could get it from them if there was a concern to figure out intensity of use.
So, there's no privacy issue with that?
No, well, they give it out by, by having the license requirement. I mean, there may be some privacy issues for the individuals, but the intensity of use, we'd be able to figure out.
But, does that for sure cover all agencies that do that, or what about those that work on their own?
Yeah, if somebody was working outside that system, but, you know, you have no idea how much that's going on right now. I mean, to be frank, it's so.
Well, the whole intent of this is to cut down and avoid resident complaints about their neighbor. I mean, if somebody's doing it nicely and within, covertly and nicely, nobody's ever going to know.
Correct. Correct. That's, that's true. But, you know, and there are no guarantees, but the odds are that if people are using it relatively intensely and 60 days a year is fairly intense, if it's, then they're probably using a standard way of advertising it and collecting. But, you know, you don't know. And you, you would find out when you got a complaint and you tried to investigate it, you know, that's, but there's no guarantee. Correct. There could be, it could be difficult to prove over intensive use, which was your point, I think.
Correct.
And that, that could very well be the case.
So, I'll just finish with the thoughts I had on this. As I've tried to understand this, this topic, perhaps others might find it useful to, to view it this way as well. From my vantage point, I think there's, there's two issues here. So, the first is the extent to which we are comfortable with permitting vacation rentals and incorporating them as a, as a unique mechanism within our ordinance. And then, the second issue is if we are comfortable with them being incorporated into the ordinance, then what is our evaluation of the proposed language that has been put before us and that we have looked at now a second time? From, to, I guess the way I would summarize the discussion or a piece of the discussion at our last meeting is that there, there was an opinion expressed, I think very eloquently by Commissioner Lesniak, asking, should we even permit these at all? Are we compelled as a commission to allow these? Yes, we have been provided the draft language. We have been asked by the village board of trustees to engage in this discussion, but we are under no obligation to incorporate these into our ordinance if we have some reservations about it. And just as a reminder, the, the, the material distinction between vacation rentals and BNB's that are already in the ordinance are that in the case of vacation rentals, the owner of the property, the person offering the establishment, need not be present in the case of the vacation rental, whereas in the case of the BNB, they are. So, so we presently have language in the ordinance that's been approved, that we're comfortable with governing the use of BNB's. And so, one way of looking at this is, do we, to what extent do we feel we need to add additional language to cover this variation on the theme of BNB's? So, I just throw that out there for discussion.
If I may, there's one other significant difference and that is that in a vacation rental, the owners cannot prepare food for the residents. And I would also point out that although the current wording here is that the, we see, the owner doesn't have to be present, there are, the city of Chicago, in fact, the city council is voting tonight on legislation. And one of the big issues that has been drawn out just at the last minute is, does the owner have to be present? So, it's not, our draft says it doesn't have to be, but I, I want to raise that issue and I think it's something, it's very important to me. I think it's something that is, well, I don't want to get into the pluses and minuses, but I, I think that's an, an item that we need to discuss.
So, procedurally at this point, attorney Molina, we're getting into commission discussion of this matter. At what point is it appropriate to, to formally close the public hearing and, and go to a motion or?
I would say based on the fact that nobody is here and nobody wants to speak about it, well, that appears that want to speak about it, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing at, at this point unless there was a desire to, to not do it, to give another chance for someone to come. But, there doesn't appear to be any point. If, if we're going to complete the discussion tonight, you do need to close it. And that would be an appropriate point so you can finish your discussion and read your recommendation.
Yeah. So, part of the reason I ask that question is because I do, I do feel an obligation to allow Commissioner Lesniak to, to participate in, in this portion of, of the discussion simply because I think he had a, he had an opinion that I think would be important for us to incorporate in whatever goes forward to, to the village board. So, I, I guess I just offer that as a perspective. I'm not, I'm not, do you guys have any thoughts on that? Do you think we, we have enough to proceed? We've got five out of six here. We are one down, so we'd be five-sevenths of a commission. Do we have enough of a quorum to make, make motions with respect to this matter?
Well, I'd like, I think we have enough to, to go with what we have, but we could always continue at the end of it if we want to wait for Commissioner Lesniak's comments. I think that's appropriate, but it doesn't hurt to proceed because some of the, some of the points I have may require a rewrite. I hate to say it a second time around, but it, it might be better to get that rewrite done and then we do it. it, it might be better to get that rewrite done, and then we do it all with Commissioner Lesniak's presence.
Okay.
And keep in mind that you can close the public hearing, and then you can't reopen that again, but you can continue the recommendation part to the next time.
Yes.
Okay. I guess, does, does staff have a preference with respect to that decision? It seems cleanest to just continue the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, what, what that does is it gives people an option to comment if, if they want to, whereas if you close it, they cannot.
I guess, I guess on that basis alone, I, my personal preference would be to, to continue. Now, under a continuation, would, would Dennis be entitled to provide, in fact, maybe this would be a good opportunity for you to discuss-
Yeah, you can certainly discuss. We can keep the public hearing open and have a discussion now that relates to possible additional items.
Okay. Because it's, it's, it sounds like Commissioner Gary has some, some material comments he'd like to share with us, and I think his recommendation to discuss those and have them incorporated into another draft, and then further discussion within a public hearing with the presence of Commissioner Lesniak is a preferred approach. Is that, um-
Sure, so you can have the, now would be appropriate to just have all those comments, have your discussion, and then at the end of it, then there would be a motion-
To continue.
To continue, we could determine whether there's a consensus on what should be incorporated, at least to look at, it doesn't have to be the final decision, but among you about what should be incorporated in a new draft, and then continue it.
Okay. Because of my desire to try and provide, rather than simply communicating to the Village Board of Trustees that we are continuing the discussion, which I would hope they would appreciate that we are trying to thoughtfully consider this topic, I feel somewhat compelled to provide more, if we do have more information that we can share with them at this point, more insight into where we are in this topic, I think that would be useful to communicate. And so, I don't know if there is an, is there such a thing as a straw vote? Can we, at this point, try and get a sense for where folks are with respect to their comfort with proceeding with this at all?
Right, well-
I think you could ask each commissioner.
Yeah, the way, the way I would do it is just, a consensus can be developed in the discussion, and that can be, and that'll help us draft. Because if someone, if someone, if someone says, well, I think we need to add this to the ordinance, and the rest of you say, well, I don't think that's necessary, well, then, if there's only one person advocating for including that change, we probably won't include it, because there's no way it'll find its way into any recommendation. And, and as we talked about at the end of the day, I, I talked with Chairman Cussera about this, there is a way for, for the commission to give a, a combined recommendation. There could be a recommendation that they don't think it's a good idea at all, but if the board were to think it was a good idea, we think these, this is the language that it should contain. That's possible, if you want to do that. So, there are all kinds of gradations, but, but what I would suggest now is just a general discussion on, you know, how you feel, first, I guess we could go around and say, how you feel about the current language, and then, and then feel, you know, how you feel about the current language, but if you want to make suggestions or that sort of thing.
And then, can we extend that invitation to include, how do you feel about including vacation rentals?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay. So, Dennis, it sounds like you've got some, some comments prepared, so perhaps, may I ask you to lead off our discussion of-
Gee, that's unusual. No, yeah, I, first of all, I want to apologize for having these. It seems late in the game, but a couple, several things have happened that have led me to additional comments. Number one, originally, I thought I was going to have to recuse myself from this, but after talking with Attorney Mars last meeting, he said that, no, I shouldn't, shouldn't worry about that issue. I've also talked to other neighbors and relatives, not relatives, but neighbors and friends, and gotten some feedback there. And, so, I, this, I have three major points that I think are very important for us to consider and talk about, and then I have a number of other issues, including a typo and things of that type, which I can just forward to Sonia separately, that they're relatively minor. The first issue is this idea that, that I mentioned just previously to our chairman. Vacation, it's on page one, the first page, under 3-26-1, vacation rental licensees may, but are not required, to live in the vacation rental. I really feel fairly strongly that I think here in Riverside, we need to have the, the licensees, if not, in, if the vacation rental isn't their primary residence, then it should be within a very short walk of their house, or maybe the same building if it's a multiple-unit apartment house. I really think there's a self-regulating factor here that avoids all of the issues that Chicago seems to be having, associated with Rush Street and everything else that goes on down there. Not that we have a Rush Street here, but it's just an inherent self-regulation that I think should be, in our case, we should have it in our, in our code. I had suggested it, but staff decided that, that wasn't appropriate, and they came out with this as it is here. So, that's something I feel strongly about. The second one is the issue of food. Food is mentioned twice in the draft. It's on the second page, under 326-4, item 5, and it says that they may not serve or otherwise provide any food or beverage to any guest. And then it's also mentioned that they need to, any kitchen or vacation rental shall be cleaned and sanitized between guests and beverages, and all, and all food and beverages shall be discarded, all just, just as pots and pans have been washed, et cetera. I think that's a bit severe. I, we've used B&Bs, and we've also used vacation rentals, and in both cases, well, in the vacation rental cases that we've experienced, we've found bottled drinks in the refrigerator in preparation. We've found a bowl of fruit on the table. We've found certainly salt and pepper in the cabinets, ketchup in the refrigerator, items of that type. But this is so restrictive that none of those items would be allowed. It says, and I agree with the serve concept, I would change item 5 to read, prepare and serve any food or beverage to any guest. And then the rest of it, I think on the third page at the top, under D, would be that all opened food and beverages shall be discarded. And I've got some other words here that I could give to Sonia. But I do think that it's, it's a nice touch when you walk into the place and you find a bowl of fruit there, you find tea bags in the cabinets, coffee, coffee filters, rather than having to go to the local store and buy everything, including salt and pepper and all the condiments that you might be using. So, that's my second item. The third item is a question of density, which hasn't been called out specifically in Chicago, but appears to be a problem, and I'm not quite sure how to do it. I suggested some things to staff in write-ups that I gave them, but I've got some other ways of doing it. I can see that we might land up with a bunch of vacation rentals in a certain area and none in another part of town. So, certain people get upset with that part of town. I don't quite know how to do it. I'm open to doing almost anything, but I think that some method of, of controlling this and defining it now, rather than waiting for it to become a problem where there are too many in any one location, and then we have to solve the problem. If we put the rules out now, then people know what the rules are, and they can play by the rules, and we can hold them to it.
Dennis, wait, may I ask a question? Is your concern in all districts where vacation rentals are allowed, or mostly, or all in the residential districts?
Where it's, it's in the cases where it's a special use, where they have to come to us for permission, which is in residential districts.
Right, so that's my-
It's already prim, it's already permitted in the commercial areas.
So, my point would be then, that if the concern is in the residential areas not to get too much, that would, could be, and you could cull that out as a consideration in the special use process. One of the things that the special use applicant would have to, to show is a, does need in the area, or the, we have to show the density, or, or it would be questioned on it. In other words, the commission would take that into account, but we already, through our special use process, have approved three others within this area, or on this block, or whatever it is, and it could be taken into account as part of the special use process, would be my suggestion.
Exactly. It's part of the, it's part of the annual application that they have to go through, yes.
There's, there's two sides to that coin, and, and I, I am, am always concerned or mindful of how actions this body takes and how those set precedent. And so, I'm concerned that what you just described could be used by an applicant to say, well, you've approved three of these very similar special uses in this particular district, on what basis are you denying mine? That's one, that's, that's one way of looking at it. The other is to say, well, we have the discretion to say, because we have approved so many, we are choosing to not approve yours, because there already are so many in that particular district. So, I had them backwards. So, what I said, the, the second scenario is, I think, the direction you were going in. My concern is, it could be used 180 degrees sort of against us to say, well, wait a minute, wait, timeout, you've approved all these things, you can't not, not approve me.
No, you would, you would have, it's, it's a legitimate consideration to look at what is already present in an area when you're approving a special use, whether it's a sawmill or, or anything else. It's one of the things you look at now.
So, we can, so we can use as a basis for denial, the existence of what is in our subjective opinion, too many, of, too many vacation rentals in a particular area of town?
Well, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't recommend doing it in a subjective opinion approach. I would suggest taking it into account as a factor and asking questions about it. So, if you know, and staff tells you how many are in a given area within proximity of the applicant, questions could be asked about whether there have been any problems, whether, you know, are they on the same block? What is, what is looking at the, you know, the parking issues? Have there been any issues? Ask the police department, have there been any complaints? And, you know, you may decide in a given situation, it's not too much because it's been so peaceful. And what I thought you were going to say about the tension is, the tension of, well, maybe there's a demand for a given area, and maybe you're going to create more incentive to have overuse at a given property by not allowing another one. I thought that's where you were going with that. But, but I, I would say it would be, the, the good thing about it being a special use requirement is, you can ask all kinds of questions, because each applicant would have to get the approval, and so you could look at it. And I wouldn't suggest doing it in a knee-jerk way, where, oh, I think there should only be three. I would say that density is something that is looked at. And you, and if, if there, if there is density in an area, you start to ask, well, what, you know, I'd like staff to tell us, what is our, what's the usage been on these other sites? Is it, you know, have there been any complaints, and that sort of thing?
I want to split hairs, but I think in, in my opinion, there's, there's two related but different concepts. One is densi, and, and thank you, Commissioner Gary, for, for raising this dimension to the discussion, because I think there's the issue, you know, we had talked about the intensity of use, and I have been, in my mind, thinking of intensity of use as it related to an individual property. And what you are bringing to our attention is the, the density of these within a certain area. So, it's related to intensity within an area, as opposed to intensity of, of, you know, a, a single one of these properties. So, it's a broader understanding of what intensity really means.
And I'm, I'm really only raising issues that I've seen in the Tribune, reading, I've been trying to follow as many articles as possible. Those are the issues that seem to be, people talk or are talking about.
So, so those that I, the, the three issues I've noted is, if I understood your first one correctly, is that you are in favor of requiring the licensee to reside at or near the vacation rental property. The second issue concerns food, and your belief that the proposed, the currently proposed language is too restrictive with respect to that, and you had specifically recommended changing, providing to preparing in item 5 of section 326-4, and proposing that with regard to the restriction on removing food, that it referred to all open food.
Well-prepared and served, and then things that are open to be.
Yes.
Okay.
There's some other finer points associated with this, I'm just summarizing it, but in some cases where you have a guest room that you're renting out, they allow the, the guests to use your living room and your kitchen and the rest of your house. They have their own bedroom and their own bathroom, but they use the rest of the house. And I'm picturing, I get up, if I'm the owner, I get up in the morning, I'm down in the kitchen eating breakfast, and they walk in. I'm not allowed to let, to say to them, hey, here's a box of cereal, here's some milk, have breakfast. You know, that's the extreme case, but there's a whole, there's a lot of gray area here between the extreme no food, which we have here, and the B&B where you're frying eggs and everything else.
I mean, maybe a good way to do it, if the commission was so inclined, is to draw the distinction between the kind of activities that would require a preparer's license to, you know, you, kitchen, you're cooking. Daycares do that in a similar way, where they, they won't have, if, if they have a kitchen, it's a whole different ballgame from, we're just going to have pre, prepackaged snacks, and, you know, they have a caterer come in with a lunch for the kids. That's, might be a good model to follow if we wanted to go this more liberalized route with that. And then that would allow the owner to, you know, leave the, as long as they were sealed, like boxes of little cereal, or tea and coffee that someone could make.
I've got a point with regard to what Commissioner Gary's raised about the residency in the house during, or the premises during the rental, and it goes, ties in somewhat to the description, or the definition, I should say, of rent. And I think we typically take that to mean, an exchange of money for use of the premises would be a rental. There are, however, other options available online, where people trade houses for a week. Someone from North Carolina may want to be in Riverside, and Riverside wants to be in North Carolina, they switch for a week. Is that a rental, as we're contemplating this here? Because under that circumstance, they're certainly not going to be in the house or even nearby. That's another consideration.
I, if I can respond partially, I was, I did specifically suggest in my comments that we-
Your first set.
That we allow that to occur under the assumption that there is no money exchanged, or that it's minimal amount of difference in money, and that that explicitly be mentioned in here as a house exchange be explicitly excluded from-
And an exception.
Right, that could be done, okay. You have a general lit, presence requirement with certain exceptions, one of which would include an exchange such as you mentioned. That could be done.
So, so in other words, you're saying you're comfortable with the owner not being present in the case of, what I want to call, a timeshare or timeswap?
House exchange, yeah.
A house exchange, okay.
Twice, if I may, also, you've requested a general overall, the two questions, one, do you like the idea, two, the specifics of what's involved with it. I do like the idea, I think it's something, it's a, it's a logical progression between what we had, whatever it was, eight, 10 years ago, and now what we have, you're allowed to rent property, or you could be a B&B, but there's that area in between which this fills in. I think there's a logical progression there for people to choose what they want to do. Do they want to get into rental property? Do they want to be a vacation rental? Or do they want to be a, a B&B? Or do they want to be a B&amp;B?
Great, thank you, thank you. And so, if you do have any other more minor comments, you had mentioned, you know, typos and things like that, could you kindly provide those to Sonia for incorporation into the next draft?
I think she's seen some of my stuff in the past.
Great, great, thank you. Commissioner Mendoza, any additional comments beyond the time?
No.
Okay.
Do you support the three, the three suggestions?
How do you feel about Commissioner Gary's suggestions?
I'm fine with the suggestions, I did just want to raise that one.
Okay, and then I think he's fine with the exchange, so we've got, we've got that.
So, now, are you, more generally, are you comfortable with incorporating these into the ordinance?
Are you comfortable with allowing vacation rentals in Riverside?
Am I comfortable with it? I am. I don't know if there's going to be a huge, huge demand for this, but I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. Commissioner Pelletier?
Well, to start with, I would say that I would support the concept of having vacation rentals. You know, I think Riverside is a great place to visit, and we want to increase businesses, you know, or attendance to our businesses. So, this is one, another way of drawing people here. You know, I don't have as many concerns about kind of the density or nuisance, just because of the nature of the village and the nature of who we might attract to the village to stay here. I actually, my one comment to the verbiage of the ordinance actually kind of goes in the other direction in that with the parking spaces, we're requiring one parking space plus one for each guest, which if it's not owner occupied, seems unnecessary, I guess, in my mind. So, I feel like we could lessen that to make it a little easier for people who don't have as much parking spaces, or maybe they only are able to rent out the unit, you know, one unit.
Well, there was, I know there was, there's some division, I think, even on the village board about this, because I think Trustee Ballerine, when the discussion was mentioned, because he actually uses these, said he's never actually been at one where he had a car.
Right.
So, if you impose the requirement on the renter, and it's hardly ever used, they would not, maybe not be able to do it because they didn't have enough parking, when in reality, they may never have a guest who needed the space.
And because we are very close to downtown and on a train line, that's a very real possibility, especially with services like Uber and other things.
I suppose that regulation could be tweaked so that instead of it being, you could say where that, you know, if you don't have the spaces, then your guests just can't have a separate car.
Can't have a car. We could just say that there can be no on-street parking.
Correct.
Any parking has to be accommodated on-site.
Correct, that would be a.
I would advocate that.
So, rather than have any parking requirements specific to these, we would just make it in the general rules for vacation rentals that parking needs to be accommodated on the site, and if it cannot be accommodated, then the guests cannot bring a vehicle.
And perhaps that should even be in there add, is the number of parking spaces that are available, or no parking is available, or something along those lines.
On parking, I had the question, I know no parking is, no street parking is allowed overnight, but what about driveways? What are the restrictions on?
So, that's just where I was, you're reading my mind, because my understanding of our ordinance is that cars are, by ordinance, not permitted to be parked in, on a driveway that would be considered in the front yard or street yard of a property, but that they are okay, they are acceptable to be parked on a driveway that is in the rear yard.
Our rules on parking are, you have to park on a paved surface, so you can't just park in your front lawn or in your back lawn. We have restrictions on where a commercial vehicle can be parked. So, commercial vehicles cannot be parked in the front yard, they have to be in the rear yard. So, we do have that parking restriction. I don't believe we have a restriction in the zoning ordinance that says that you can't park overnight in your driveway if it's in the front yard.
I would ask that staff please get clarification on that, because it's my understanding, last time I looked at it, that we're not enforcing it, but my understanding is, is that technically parking in the front yard, even if it's on a driveway, is not permitted by ordinance.
Okay.
People do it all the time.
I know, that's my point. It's, people do it all the time, and perhaps we might want to consider changing our ordinance to reflect customary usage, but I believe the ordinance proscribes that it is, that it's not permitted.
That would be enough.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm being nuts or not, I would agree with you that a lot of people do it, and there are times when we've done it, and I know we have neighbors across the street who routinely park two cars overnight all the time because their garage is used for not automobile parking, it's used for storage. So, not an uncommon sight in town, and so this raises the potential that perhaps we want to correct, or not correct, but modify our ordinance to reflect this if we want to make such a change.
Could you send us a quick email on that?
Yeah, I'll look that up, and I will advise you as to what standards of that.
Because I think there is a connection to this language in here, because if we say that it's, you can't have on-street parking, and a licensee believes that it is acceptable by ordinance to park in a front yard driveway, when in fact it's not, then we need to do some additional edits, either to this ordinance or to other ordinances that govern parking in the front yard.
Yeah, because I had, I had considered putting in here, parking had to be behind the front, the front face of the house, and I thought that was just going to be too restrictive for, especially for the R2 and/or R1A, I guess it is, houses, that that might be more of a problem.
There is no place beyond the front yard to park.
Yeah.
Okay. Teresa, do you have other comments?
Just one comment about the kind of owner occupied or owner needing to be within a certain distance. You know, the way we're talking about that, that would apply to all vacation rentals, and I feel like, you know, in the areas where it's permitted as a use, it's not a special use, that there's really no need for that restriction, just because, again, it's more, it's a business district, and maybe it's more appropriate to have rentals of that nature. So, I just, I would be opposed, I think, to that restriction. I think in order to make it workable for most people in those areas, that it would be onerous to require owner occupied.
Can you, okay.
So, in the business districts where there are fixed uses, and somebody, you know, in those instances, they would only be allowed if people own the unit. So, if somebody's a renter of the unit, they would not be allowed to then rent it as a vacation rental as well. We say you have to have an ownership interest in it. But if somebody owns a condo that's, you know, at Village Center, they would be allowed to, by this ordinance, rent it out as a vacation rental. And you're saying that you would not be in favor of having an additional restriction, that they have to be staying somewhere nearby?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
You know, we need to be careful, you know, conceptually, someone might say that makes sense. How do we define what nearby is?
That's a consideration as well.
By feet. You would set a measurement. Yeah, feet, radius.
So, then.
Or a drive time, I suppose, would be another.
I think you have to do a distance.
So.
Drive time varies wildly.
There seems to be a prevailing opinion to go in that direction, so while we're on the topic, do we want to specify, do we want to define what nearby is in terms of feet?
Maybe, maybe rather than try to pick a number without really knowing, maybe we could find, try to find if there are any other communities that did that, and see if we can get a spread for you.
That'd be great, thank you. But I like having a metric in there rather than.
Correct. That's what I would recommend. The other is too subjective. Yeah, drive time or whatever, it's just too.
I would likely drive, I could drive a lot further distance than other people in a given amount of time. Okay, thank you. Any other?
None, I have.
Okay.
Commissioner Mateo?
Commissioner Mateo, would you, do you have comments you'd like to offer?
Was there a decision made about continuing the meeting or closing it?
So, we are proceeding this evening with an understanding that we will continue the meeting, continue the public hearing at the conclusion of our discussion this evening so that staff and the attorneys can revise or incorporate comments from tonight's discussion into another draft of this ordinance, and hopefully when we reconvene or reopen the public hearing, we will have the benefit of Commissioner Lesniak and possibly the person who fills the current vacancy.
Well, I'm sort of mercifully saying, I don't think we need a third public hearing. We've had two already, nobody has shown up to provide comments. Sonia, can you tell me why you chose, or staff has chosen, a total of 60 days?
There had been some communities that were discussing doing 90 days. I kind of felt like 90, there was some, also discussion about 90 days, a lot of people feeling that that was too permissive. You know, that allows quite a number of weekends within a year to be utilized for a vacation rental. So, in kind of breaking down, perhaps allowing somewhere around two weekends a month, I tried to come up with a number of days that wasn't a weird number of days. So, that's where we came up with 60 days. That kind of goes on average of about two weekends, two, two and a half weekends a month that somebody could offer this. So, that seemed reasonable, especially given the pushback that a lot of individuals in Chicago and in some other communities that have discussed the 90-day rule, saying that 90 days is too permissive. And given everybody's concerns about having too much density, or really allowing, you know, that many people into town, that perhaps 60 was a more reasonable amount that the commission and the board might feel comfortable with, but still allow somebody to get that kind of usage out of their, out of their residence if they wanted.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm not in favor of saying that the owner needs to be nearby the property. I think that's overworking the ordinance. And with neighbors being able to file complaints with Airbnb, I don't think we're going to have a problem. I don't think the owner has to be nearby. I'm not in favor of adding that to the ordinance. And did I hear correctly that two commissioners wanted to have VRBOs be exchange-only and no compensation?
Uh, no.
No, that would be an exception from the presence requirement.
That would be an exception from the licensing that special use require.
Yes, they were favoring in general a presence or proximity requirement, but an exception to that would be an exchange of dwelling space. Then it would just be not applicable.
Well, the whole, this whole ordinance wouldn't be applicable to a exchange.
Oh, it would, but I mean, that requirement, the proximity requirement would not apply. It would be an exception from the regular proximity requirement.
My understanding from Commissioner Mendoza's comment was that he would like to see the trading of houses for minimal compensation to not be considered a vacation rental, and thereby not require a special use for the licensing.
That's my point, is I don't think it's a rental.
Got it, I misunderstood.
And I was viewing it as a no exchange of money.
An exemption from the whole.
Yes.
That would not click in the requirement of being considered a vacation rental.
Right, because there's a lot of requirements for somebody to do a one-off vacation rental with somebody else to go through.
Somebody can list their house for money on VRBO. Yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes, but they would need to go through our special use process.
Great.
And become licensed.
Couple comments on the ordinance, in 326-6.
Yes?
Item D as in dog is redundant with 326-4C as in cat. Commissioner Gary's comment a couple of months ago about trying to eliminate or minimize redundancies, does it need to be in there twice?
We can look at that and see if we can take it out.
Okay. And then what about Trustee Ballerine's suggestion, or maybe it was Trustee Lumsden about providing fire escape directions?
I did add that in, the requirement that they have to provide, post their certificate.
Those notice requirements are distinct, but they could certainly be combined, rather than having a separate section. And one requires posting of the license itself, the other requires posting of name and contact information. Right, or am I wrong? Yeah, one requires the license to be posted, like a business license or a building permit, and the other requires contact information.
Okay.
But they, but those could be combined, so that they, that would cut down a little bit of.
So, I guess the ask is, the ask is to somehow reconcile or combine those.
Well, we could do that so you don't have two separate sections, but they are distinct things.
Right. No, I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting combining 326-4 with 326-6.
No, no, I understand.
But just those specific provisions.
Since it's, since they're both posting requirements, we could include one requirement that requires the posting of the license, the license's name, and the contact information.
Correct.
But Sonia, back to my question about the fire escape directions, you said it's in here?
Uh, yes, in 326-4C, at the end of it, it says that they need to provide the telephone number and licensee or his authorized agent, and an emergency exit floor plan.
Oh, I missed that, thank you. And then, I assume it's not in this section, but how much would a license cost?
Uh, the standard fee is a hundred dollars.
Okay. And if somebody's wanting to get a license, how would they know that? Because I don't think it's in here.
I think it references the previous section, but let me double check here really quick.
326-2 says a license is required to operate a vacation rental as defined in this chapter. And it talks about how they're issued, they're good for a year.
So, can there be a reference put in, you know, in accordance with, just reference?
The fee.
The, well, not the fee, well, not the, not the fee itself, but reference the section where the fee is identified.
Cross-reference.
Should that, should that fee be changed down the road, or changing it in one place?
Yes, we can add that reference to 326-2 where it talks about the license being required.
And then lastly, under usage design?
Yes?
1011 Street, do you think it'd be worthwhile adding that the property is 25% owned? Or is it not worth putting there?
I think there was an earlier comment that, I'm restating it, but the message I thought, the comment I thought was that essentially renters may not sublet their, sublet the property.
That's in the main regulations under Title III, Chapter 26. It talks about the ownership interest, and the definition references back to as regulated in Title III.
in Title III in the definition itself.
And then, Chair, I don't think the board is asking whether we are for or against Airbnb or vacation rentals. I think they just want us to present the best ordinance we can, and then they're going to make the policy decisions. Sonia, is that your understanding?
Oh, yes. I mean, based on the discussion, nobody seemed to be opposed on the board to allowing vacation rentals. That's why they moved the discussion forward to, to have the text amendment reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so...
But the commission would have to be free to say, "We don't think that any changes to the current ordinance are appropriate." They can make that recommendation.
Certainly. So, but there was not anybody vocal saying that they were against vacation rentals at the board level about this. So, there was a certain level of complicity about it. So, you know, if we're not, if it was a commission are not in favor of allowing them, then, you know, obviously you need to make that point known in your discussion. So, as you make your recommendation, it is clear on, it's not necessarily that you have issues with point A or point B within the regulations. It is, the concept as a whole is, is a hard pill to swallow, and you're not willing to make the recommendation to add them as permitted or special uses in any of the districts.
Correct.
It doesn't sound like that's an issue right now based on the majority here, but that would be...
Well, it's a nice segue into the comments that I'd like to make. Unless, Jill, do you have any further comments to make?
I'm done.
Okay, great. Thank you very kindly for your perspective and contributions to this, which is the same thanks I'd like to communicate to all commissioners who have contributed to this. I think we've had a rich discussion about it. I'm glad it's, it's come onto our docket to discuss. I had provided what I'd like to think are constructive additions to the language that we have before us this evening, because I do want to support the overall effort to draft language that the board may choose to proceed with. So, I am, with respect to ordinance language, I am comfortable with the draft that we have discussed tonight and the changes that we have all made, that we've discussed making to it. That said, in principle, I am not in favor of adding this language to our ordinance. My personal belief is that the B&amp;B language governs the use that I'm comfortable with. Even that was a little bit of a stretch for me. Over time, I've become a little more comfortable with it. And perhaps over time, I may eventually be, become more comfortable with the whole sharing economy and this whole notion of Airbnb. But at present, I am not in favor of incorporating this into our ordinance, believing that given the scope or the scale of the material differences between this and B&amp;B are insufficient to warrant such an addition. But to the extent that I can constructively improve the language that the board may choose to enact, then, then I'd like to continue that discussion, but in principle, I am, I am not in favor of it.
So, everyone had weighed in. The first, the first decision is, is whether as a commission, you want to make a decision tonight, in which case you need to close the public hearing so there can be an appropriate motion, or whether you want to wait to have a complete commission present. If the majority of you wants to wait, then you need to decide whether to close the public hearing anyway and then just move the recommendation to another time, or to leave the public hearing open and make the recommendation and, have, close the public hearing at the next meeting.
Right. So, I, I'm comfortable with what I, our discussion earlier, at the beginning of our discussion tonight on this topic of continuing the public hearing. So, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to our next regularly scheduled, the date of our next regularly scheduled plan commission hearing so that we can have the benefit of perhaps some additional public comments, as well as the perspective of Commissioner Lesniak, who I know has some strong opinions on this topic.
Second.
Any discussion?
If we close the public discussion, does Commissioner Lesniak get to have his input as to his thoughts on this?
Yes. You, the closing the public hearing would simply mean that you, when you meet the next time, you wouldn't be taking any more testimony from the interested public. But everyone would still be able to weigh in and fashion a decision.
Okay.
A recommendation, I should say, not a decision.
And so, by closing the public hearing, the only thing that we achieve is preventing someone, should that happen, from commenting.
Right. Although, although even then, you, you can't prevent them from commenting if they're here and they want to talk. In the technical sense, though, they can't provide sworn testimony in favor of or against. But as residents, they can speak before you and make their opinions, no. It's kind of weird to say that, but it's the way it is.
So, my thought, you know, informing, you know, my making the motion and I think our earlier discussion, I thought was as long as we're going to continue our discussion, we might as well continue that discussion having the opportunity for the benefit of public testimony.
There's been a motion and a second on the motion to continue the public hearing, which would automatically continue the discussion. You wouldn't need to do a separate motion. Take a vote on that.
Right. Sonia, would you comment on that?
Chairman Cucera made the motion and member Gray.
Commissioner Gary cited the continuing of the public hearing, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's the motion.
All right. Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Mateo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Felatier?
Yes.
Chairman Cucera?
Yes.
All right, and the motion carries. The public hearing is continued to our next regular meeting, which is July 27th.
Great.
And we will incorporate these changes.
For your further discussions.
Thank you.
Very good. Great. Thank you. Just a quick administrative note. I couldn't not pay attention to my family who's alerting me to weather that's on the way, so just letting you know...
I got, I got one of those too.
You got those too.
Sixty mile an hour winds and hail on the way.
Yeah, so, so perhaps, two inches in diameter is what I had heard, so. So, perhaps we can, we can use that to motivate us moving briskly into the next agenda item, which is item 6C, which is a public hearing to consider a text amendment governing variation standards. Do I have a motion to open that public hearing?
So, I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing to discuss variation standards to our, a text amendment to our variation standards is hereby open. Sonia, may I ask you to please review the topic for us so that we can begin our discussion?
Uh, yes. The public notice was posted in our local newspaper on Wednesday, June 1st. As of this writing, the village has not received any comments, positive or negative, regarding the proposed text amendments. As you know, we've been discussing the idea of undue hardship, which is one of our current standards for a variation for quite a while. The village board discussed the matter back in April and directed the Plan and Zoning Commission to discuss revising the variation standards. We've had some discussion, and we've gone through a proposed, oh, a, a proposed variation standards that you reviewed at the last meeting. We got your feedback and made some changes to those standards that we brought before you last month. So, we would be, as a recap, we'd be removing the current three standards that are in the ordinance and replacing them with seven new standards that should help the commission and the petitioner think through whether there is a particular hardship or practical difficulty. The proposed amendments include consideration of existing architectural aesthetic situations, existing physical or other unusual conditions specific to the property. Some of the other standards include not altering the essential character of the neighborhood, not being detrimental to the public welfare, or injurious to other property, that the variation is not based upon a desire to increase financial gain, and that the difficulty or hardship is not created by any person presently having an interest in the property. Also, that it's not generally applicable to other properties within the same zoning classification. There was some discussion about providing some sort of definition of what a practical difficulty or hardship is, but we've not included any definitions because it's kind of a fluid nature of that given case law. So, you can't really pin down specifically what is a, you know, hardship, what is a practical difficulty. So, we have not included any definitions of those two items in the proposed text amendment. We also incorporated the variation standards as a requirement for the board's final decision on variation requests. So, you will see that reflected in the draft text amendment that is before you. And you do have the standards for recommending a text amendment to the zoning ordinance included in your staff report. You have the draft full text. So, this is the full text of Section 10-2-2, 2-2, -2 variations for you to look through. So, it includes the notification, the authority, the notice, the standards, and the decision-making and effective periods as well.
Great. Thank you very kindly. Okay, at this point, we'd like to open it up for discussion by commissioners. Any questions of staff or Attorney Molina?
I, yeah, I'm really having trouble with some, when there's wording in the state statute and there's wording in our code, our draft code, specific wordings in both cases. And so, we can expect residents to come back to us and ask, "Well, what is a practical difficulty? And what is a particular hardship?" We have to say to them, "Uh, we don't know, but we're going to use it in evaluating this." I just don't accept that. I understand case law is unsettled, but we have, we should be able to, if we're using those words and the state is telling us to use them, I think we should put a definition in there and then follow up with some comment that says, "Unless case law says otherwise." But we should be saying something about that. What are people going to do when they, when they read this and they got a practical difficulty? Hmm, what's that? Particular hardship, what's that? How do I, how do I define this so that I can win my case when I go to the board? I mean, there are things I use in my mind, and I, I put those in my suggestions.
If it were a, and this is just my professional opinion, not necessarily my legal opinion, not being an attorney, if it were that easy that a particular hardship is A, B, C, it would not be something that you guys have to discuss.
It's always easier to say what it's not than what it is, unfortunately.
Yeah, let me, let me give a good example of why this is hard and why it's hard to define it in the way that Mr. Gary is suggesting. It's like, this is what, in my opinion, is a mixed question of law and fact. And it's like negligence, okay? Negligence is action. If somebody engages in negligent conduct and they, and they injure someone, they're liable for it, right? But negligence varies from case to case because there's all the circumstances of what happened after being taken into account. The best you can do is come up with instructions that say you've got a duty of reasonable care, and it's up for, to the group, if it's a judge or a jury, to decide, "Well, in this particular case, given what the evidence was and given what the standards are, is it negligence or not? And is a variation warranted or not?" You give the best directions about the rules you can, but if, if you, if you could define it, you wouldn't need a variation process because you'd incorporate it into your, your black and white rules that...
Which is your zoning ordinance. That's your black and white rules.
And in fact, the very, the very existence of the variation is based on saying that because an ordinance can't, can't take into account all the unique characteristics of a given plot of land and the circumstances of it, you have this option open if you can prove these things, so.
I still think you can start with very basic differences. And how far you go into the details is, is another question. But for instance, a hardship versus a difficulty. To me, that says that a hardship is something that's there now, and I am experiencing this, and I have a problem with this. It's there. It's existing. A difficulty is, I want to make a change, and I can't make a change because of this and that and the other thing. It's construction-oriented. Those are two general categories that are a little more precise than what we have here. I, well, I have, I put my best, my best thoughts into the words that I passed on, and I understand that they're, from a legal standpoint, we don't want to get into that. But I still feel that we, we should make an effort, and our, we should make our best effort to try and make it clear to people what it is that we are concerned with, even though lawyers and others and higher beings in the state government may decide otherwise, and that will overrule us.
You know, it, it starts to, you know, let me first say, with respect to perspectives on this, I don't view any point of view on this as, it's not a question of, for me anyway, right, wrong, good, bad, true, false. It is, by definition, a gray area. And we're trying, we are trying to constructively and effectively provide a framework for us to navigate that gray area. And, and as Attorney Molina said, provide some standards by which informed commissioners and trustees can, you know, make some decisions. And, and as I'm listening to this discussion unfold, I'm reminded of discussions that happened when we were talking about revising the ordinance, the residential zoning ordinance, and the topic of, of whatever we decided to call it euphemistically, like, like the design police. And we were trying to get into design standards. And very quickly, those, those, those discussions started to sort of devolve into personal taste and what materials you can use or can't use. And so, so I don't disagree with, with the spirit of your comments. In fact, I, I agree with them. We're trying to tighten this up to remove the ambiguity and to provide concrete direction to homeowners trying to, you know, navigate the process. On the other hand, I also understand the practical difficulty of trying to button it up that tight. And so, I think this is an improvement over what we had. It's, it's, directionally, I think it's correct. But I think it's also, I'm also acknowledging that, that applying these standards do continue to depend on well-intentioned commissioners and trustees trying to, trying to do the right thing, so. Just throwing that out there. Any other, any other comments? Jill, do you, would you like to weigh in? I want to make sure you know that you're not, you're not present, but certainly not forgotten.
Um, no, I, I liked the new proposed ordinance.
I have, I do have one concern about the wording here.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at Section A, E1A, it talks about the particular physical or other unusual condition that's going to cause the hardship or practical difficulty. Continues on to say, "Such conditions may include, but are not limited to." And then we go ahead and list out, I think it's seven. You know, the...
Two, isn't it?
Right, two. Okay. Those two conditions, do they, because it says "for," do they both have to be met? Because if you look down at the next numbered paragraph two, it says, "A variation shall be recommended only if the evidence, da-da-da-da, sustains each of the conditions enumerated above."
I... The intent was, the intent was that it would be one or two for A, not both one and two.
Okay, right. That's correct.
So that it should be or. So that it should say sustains one of the conditions enumerated above, correct? Or either?
Well, no, because there are, there's A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, and so it's talking about...
So Adrian, so I raised, I raised the same issue.
So two is referencing everything under one.
Right. Yeah, here, look, A, you have to meet A, B, C, D, you have to meet all of them. However, to meet A, you can meet A1 or A2 to meet A. Those are two, there are two different ways to meet A.
Correct.
But you have to meet A, and you have to meet B, C, D, E, F, and G. So when you get to number two, you've got to have all of them.
Okay, that's, that's, I wanted to make sure.
But you don't have to have A1 and A2. You just have to have A, and A can be met by one or two.
And so, so on that specific point, I mentioned it at the last meeting, and I'm looking at, we don't have page numbers, but it's, it's E2 where the sentence that Commissioner Mendoza was referring to, a variation shall be recommended only if the evidence provided by the applicant and the judgment of the Planning and Zoning Commission sustains each of the conditions enumerated above. And I mentioned it to Attorney Mars. My question was specific to the word each, and, you know, was it clear enough? And I think...
That's my concern.
And I think Commissioner Mendoza is raising the same point. It's the sensitivity around the word each. Is it, is it piercingly clear that each means every one of A through G?
Each and every one? Do we...
Yeah, because, well, the only reference to conditions is in that paragraph A, and it talks about one or two.
Can we say sustains each of the conditions A through G?
Yes.
Enumerated above?
Replace each with every one of the conditions of each...
Or maybe we don't use the word conditions. Maybe we say the standards.
Yeah.
Since we call it standards for variation.
Say each and, each and every one of the standards A through G above.
Right. So that makes it piercingly clear, there's no ambiguity.
And then it also clarifies that, no, you don't need to meet one and two. It's just A, because we're not going to say...
Right. And, and, you know, or is pretty clear.
Yes.
Under A1 or A2.
Correct.
Okay.
We can do that.
Yeah.
And I think the changing conditions to standards also is helpful.
Yes.
Because of the limitation in A, so that's, that's helpful, I think.
So I would ask that, you know, you guys go through this, please uniformly, if elsewhere in the document those provisions are referenced, please reference them or refer to them as standards.
Yeah, and well, once we have a recommendation, we'll, we'll read it very carefully.
Okay. Great.
There's one other, this is maybe a nitpick, but if I go to one on the front page, 1A1, and take the first six words of 1A1 and the last 13 words of that paragraph, it reads, and all of, this is a run-on, there's no period in the middle of it. It says, "The presence of an existing use rather than the personal situation of the current owner of the lot." Now, isn't an existing use the personal situation of the owner? Isn't that what, the existing use is what the owner is using? I think...
No, what it's meant to distinguish between are things that relate to the lot, not to the preferences of the owner, like an owner has a lot of dogs, and so they need a variation from some sort of side yard to create an offset so they don't disturb their neighbors. That would typically, and under all the case law, your personal, the way that you personally live in your, on your property is not, should not be taken into account in deciding whether a variation from zoning is. Is that supposed to be the same no matter who lives there? It's supposed to be good for all the owners of that, of that property. So when it talks about existing use structure, it talks about the zoning use, whether it's residential or, or whether, you know, single-family residential or that kind of thing.
Or commercial use.
Yeah. So it's, it's not the personal preferences.
Okay.
And zoning law has developed so that, you know, it used to be in the very strict thought of hardship that it has to relate not even to the house that's on the lot. It has to relate to, well, there's a creek that goes through this particular lot, so the setback rules won't work here, or I can't build a house that's more than 50 square feet, you know? Something like that. But now we look, now we consider, most zoning boards consider the dwelling as something that is part of the lot because we don't like teardowns. We want to preserve our houses. So we will consider a setback in order to allow you to do an addition and maintain the architectural integrity and, so the house is now considered part of the lot mostly. And things like mature trees, if, you know, if you're going to build an addition and you, you know, you want a little variation so you can preserve a 200-year-old oak or not crush its roots, most zoning boards and village boards will consider that. But that's different from, I have five dogs, or, you know, I, I play the trombone, which I do, but...
That's not, you're not...
Anyway. Does that, does that make sense?
Or I cut down trees, as Mr. T did.
Right. But does that make sense?
I think I understand. Thank you.
And so, I have a comment.
Please.
In, in item two, where, and I think Dave brought this up at the last meeting, I still think there's a concern to say, in situations where the subject property and the existing structures thereon are of architectural and/or aesthetic importance, you know, I think there is a problem in how we establish that, and we're saying that really only houses where we establish, you know, that they have that importance are able to use this particular part of the, of the standards. I think we could actually strike that portion from item two, so it would just say, in situations where the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining a desirable feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot or structure. I mean, I think those last couple sentences already, you know, allow the ability to determine what, you know, it should be maintained, or the desirable feature.
I think if you strike in the second line, the phrase of architectural and/or aesthetic importance, I mean, I think that's the whole meat of that provision two. If you, if you take that, you cut the heart out of that whole provision, in which case, if, if we would be so inclined, then the whole, the whole provision two would be removed, if I'm reading it correctly.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I think what, what's being discussed is, I think what you're saying is that in order to apply to the way it currently reads, there has to be an independent determination that this particular house is of architectural or aesthetic significance in the ZBA's mind.
Correct.
And, and that if it is, then if you need a variation in order to maintain things you want to maintain, like the roof pitch or the roof line or that, then you can make your appeal. But I think what Commissioner Teletier is suggesting is that, it's a policy decision, is that she would not have that be a separate requirement, and if you, as long as you are maintaining things, that even if we don't think they're architecturally significant, but you are maintaining a roof line, you're not going to get a weird, you're avoiding a weird jut out in order to maintain a setback, but you're maintaining the existing architecture of that house, even if we don't think it's worth much, then you can still apply. That, I think, is right. Am I right?
I mean, you know, a ranch, we may not think that a ranch house is of architectural importance, but that doesn't mean that a person should be prevented from trying to maintain the architecture of that building. There's still an architectural aesthetic, whether we think it's important or not, of the house itself.
Okay.
So I guess the question...
I mean, they're still coming in for a variance.
I've got it, right? That's what we're...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I do recall this, you're correct. We did, we did discuss it, and I know part of the discussion, I seem to recall, part of the discussion included the extent to which, for example, we might want to include the list of registered landmark homes.
He was concerned about the use of the word historical in there, which is what we, the previous language had, and that if we were going to do that, then we need to specify or, you know, list in there all the landmarks.
What historical means.
And so, rather, the staff's intention was not to be limiting to just those landmark homes by using the word historical. So in light of the discussion that happened there, staff removed the use of the word historical and tried to perhaps keep more to the essence of trying to preserve the architecture of a home, whether it is landmarked or not. Part of what we were trying to get at with historical is that, you know, like the other one, there's historical evidence that there was a porch on the building at some point. The porch has been removed. They would like to put a porch, if you call it a porch, you know, that, I know that's up for debate by people, but, you know, they would like to put a porch back on said house. However, the ordinance does not allow you to rebuild a porch that hasn't been there for 50 years. So, but there's historical evidence that there was a porch there. So that would, you know, we're trying to accommodate that kind of situation where there may be, you know, you know, a Victorian somewhere in town where the porch was ripped off of it at some point, and, you know, and now somebody wants to restore that onto the house. You know...
And so, I would argue that, you know, without, by striking those few words that I suggested, this would still very appropriately apply to that situation of the porch. Right? Because we're saying a situation in which the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining a desirable feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot or the structure, without having to first establish that that structure is of architectural and/or aesthetic importance.
Right. Okay.
So I just want to acknowledge the obvious, that we have a licensed architect and former member of this august body in, present with us tonight. Greg, I mean, do you, do you have an opinion on...
Yes.
Sure, maybe, I think for benefit of those at home, we could...
The process of keeping kosher.
Put your kindly swear, Greg. Do you swear to tell the truth and only the truth in reference to all matters being discussed at this public hearing concerning this commission?
I do.
Thank you.
Greg Randall, as he said, an architect and a resident of Riverside. And I guess, to Teresa's point, I kind of agree with that because by putting that in there, it is, in a sense, declaring you guys an architectural review board. And since we're kind of loath to establish one, we shouldn't kind of, on the side, establish one kind of through the back door. And I guess, I think her recommendation is really good because it doesn't, it doesn't set you up as making that judgment. You know, if, if they are adhering to the aesthetics and the design of the existing elements on that property, then I think they're kind of meeting what she's saying without us declaring, well, this is good or bad. So I do think, I think her recommendation is really good. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm quickly going through the balance of the proposed standards to ensure that...
And those all, those are all from an Illinois Supreme Court case that involved LaSalle Bank, and they're what are called the factors that are to be considered legally when a variation is not granted but challenged in court.
Okay. So. I guess what I'm trying to ensure is that by, so essentially what we're talking about is in item E1A2, striking everything before the first comma. So striking the phrase situations, so the full sentence would read, I don't want to read the whole thing.
Situations in which...
Yeah, I was going to go all the way back to the thing up top, but if we take it all the way down to that specific item, what we're talking about is removing the phrase situations in which the subject property and the existing structures thereon are of architectural and/or aesthetic importance, comma, and. And what we would be left with is a standard, a portion of a standard that would read, the ordinance prevents the owner from re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining a desirable feature related to the lot or structure, or from maintaining the architectural integrity of the lot or structure. So what I'm trying to do is, is to go through the balance of what's left, assuming that change gets made. Do we, I want to ensure that what we don't do is open up the floodgates.
Well, they still have to meet the other ones, too.
And that's, that's what I'm going through, is to make sure that, you know, everything else here would, you know, there's a safety, there's a backstop here so that we don't, you know, we don't have a basis to reject nonsensical...
Right. It's not some re-establishing, restoring, or maintaining. You know what I mean? So it's something that's already there or was there. So it is limited. It's not saying, you know, anything.
Yeah. You're not allowing, you know, you're essentially permitting re-establishment or...
Right. So, you know, when you look at, when you look at B, it's basically saying the public policy there is, it's something that you're, you're faced with. You're not doing it to economically get, gain an advantage. C deals with the idea that, you know, if you're looking at, if somebody builds a house and they build it in a weird way that technically meets code, and then they turn around and get a variation and say, well, I'm just trying to preserve the design, well, you know, it's, that's what that tries to get at. That's how that would fit into the A2 and this. So they, they couldn't have created their own hardship by a design, which then they try to use the variation process to complete what they wanted to do all along, if that makes sense.
Yep.
And then it would also have to say that it's variation base would not be applicable. I mean, this is basically saying that this is, this is a somewhat unique situation. It's, it's not standard. Although, you know, that often is not the case. Like, many, many times, people don't have a separate set of rules for corner lots, but they regularly grant some relief because of the difficulties of the extra having two setbacks. So those would be generally applicable to all corner lots. So sometimes that's ignored a little bit, but the concept, I think, you understand. It's supposed to be somewhat unique. And then E starts to look at the neighbors, right? E talks about the general welfare or the neighborhood, and, you know, this is where you're looking at other, other properties, and so is F. What about the neighbors? What's this going to do? What, you know, if we grant this front yard setback, is this house going to now stick out like a sore thumb because of where all the other houses are on the block? And then G just deals with public safety, and, you know, I mean, that's basically building code stuff more than zoning, but, so. So you'd still have to meet all those, as well as showing that you want, or you're protecting an architectural element by doing what I'd like to do, but I can't because of the zoning code.
Greg?
I have a question related to that general flexibility. So, for instance, in Chicago, at a certain point in time, most of the houses were built on the north property line, you know, probably to allow more sunlight coming in on the south, which is kind of an odd thing because... which is kind of an odd thing because the net works out. But anyway, in that situation, there are, you can build or extend or approximate construction types generally throughout the city where those conditions occur. Now, how does that apply in terms of the specificity of it not being generally applicable to other lots?
Well, for a couple things. First of all, there is a, there is a, there's a tension between when you amend your zoning code and when you grant variations. And typically speaking, there are always going to be variations that are going to be granted regularly because the conditions keep being met. And when that happens, then you start to say, hey, you know, maybe we should just allow this if it's something that, so that will develop. You know, let, because, because needs change. With garage sizes, for example, where in the modern market, you need a certain size garage for it to be really useful. So you might be granting variations, taking that into account, and then you say, you know, maybe we need to increase our, we need to change our garage specifications. The other thing is that when you're talking about old ways of developing a block and what can be done, some, some communities interpret what you can do with legal non-conforming uses differently. Some say, if you are simply going up on a, on an existing house and you're not expanding it in any way but going straight up with what you've got already there, you don't need a variation. Most communities would say, no, you can't increase the scope, but some do. They say if you're just going up-
Village of River Forest.
Some, Village of River Forest says, you can't go up because it could affect light of your neighbor. We want them to have input, but you could go back. Even if your setback encroaches and all you want to do is add in addition going back and you're maintaining that, even though you're adding to the encroachment, we're going to let you do it. So is that-
Yeah, no, I answered the first contractual explanation because I can see where there could be situations because the zoning code has changed and it's affected setbacks and houses that were built before that were adhering to a different setback. So then you've got a whole category of homes that were built in that frame time, that timeframe that you don't meet the current code.
Right, and then when you combine that with a market desire for larger square footage and you start getting variation after variation after variation, that you keep saying, yeah, we want, we don't, we would, we don't want them to like jut out the wall. We want it to track, we want architectural integrity, let's just allow that. But then you have to set the standards where you're going to, you know, allow it.
And I understand, so I'm trying to understand how that is going to apply in terms of variation procedure.
Oh, you mean that standard?
So, yeah, so, in meeting that, that standard for variance. So let's say somebody goes, yeah, but that can occur in 20 other homes, so it's not specific to this particular property. It is generally applicable to other communities. So I guess that's why we have not necessarily-
That, that came up, sometimes it comes up as to whether you want to do a text amendment or you want to do a variation. And then the village board had a big discussion about that. And I don't want to talk about that particular variation because it was really a strange one involving the lift and the garage, but there was a, there was a big discussion about, you know, it's really not a variation, trustee Pollock said, it's really should be a text amendment, you know, because this applies everywhere, so.
Sure, okay.
So that's that discussion. But there are many times where things start out as a common variation that then become text amendments. But they don't have to be because sometimes you want to give the neighbors a chance to weigh in if there's a problem, if they have an objection.
Sure, so in those situations where, let's say, it's occurred three or four times and the variance has been granted for those three or four times, does that then become the case law that supports the future of the village or that fair?
No, I got it, but now, now, now I need to twist this a little bit for you because you need to understand that that particular thing, it will never come into play if the variation is granted because, well, theoretically, a neighbor could challenge the granting of a variation, but it almost never happens. If you're allowing someone to do what they want with their property, it's really not going to be an issue. Where, where it becomes an issue is where you deny a variation and they sue. And then one of the things the court is going to look at, when it looks at, was the board wrong to deny you your variation, is are you faced with a unique situation? Or does the zoning code apply to this all over the place and you just want an exception? Because if you just want an exception and this would apply all over the place, we're going to, we're not, we're not going to overrule what the village did to you. It's easier to understand if you look at it from the way it would really happen.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so very good discussions, touching on, I think, the issue that's important to all of us, establishing precedent and so forth, so.
Yes.
So can I just get the sense from others on the commission? Are we, are we moving in the direction of being comfortable with removing that clause that we've been discussing? Okay, so, so it sounds like guidance to staff is to remove that clause that we've-
Yes.
So you're, you're good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying a backdoor approach to adding it back, but in the same spirit of trying to address the difficulty that we are talking about with respect to defining what importance is, you know, I think you can argue that we run into the same issue when you look at what's left after the removal of that clause, and you go up to the top of the next page and then you've got a, you've got desirable feature. You know, it's like, how do you define desirable? So I would, I would suggest, I'm comfortable with removing the clause we're talking about, and I'd also, and I'd further suggest that we consider changing the word desirable to either significant architectural or material architectural feature because I think that helps communicate what we mean by desirable.
Well, it is referencing to the lot or structure, so if-
Yeah, I mean, the one thing about, the word desirable seems to me as a subjective word that refers to the applicant, so that the word "material" or "significant" would be something that the commission would be looking at. So I mean, I think it's a little more objective.
That's, that's what I'm trying to insert there.
Yep.
Thank you.
So you said a material or-
I have proposed either, either significant architectural or material architectural feature.
I think those words are understood by the industry and, yeah.
I'm happy with either option.
I mean, what you're getting at there is whether the design really preserves lines that are in the building or whether someone says they are and you look at it and an architect, an architect looks at it and says, no, it's not. You know, this is a ranch and you're adding a Victorian couple on it. It's not, you're not, that's, that's how I read that.
Okay, so any further discussion on the proposed language and changes that we have-
Going back to the first deletion, we already approved, I think the word "prevents" has to become "preventing."
I'm sorry, where are you looking at?
Back on the first page under two on the third line, we're deleting up to the word "and." So the sentence would read, "but are not limited to the ordinance preventing the owner from..."
I was thinking we could keep it, keep "situations in which," and have it say "situations in which the ordinance prevents the owner from-"
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Gotcha.
Oh, okay, I thought-
I think that reads best.
All right, that, fine, I'm happy with that, yeah. I thought we had deleted the other part.
And then it tracks the beginning of one.
I'm sorry, Jill?
Yeah, I have a question for a attorney, as a result of the discussion of the number of standards that we should consider.
Yes.
So under, under 1A, there are two examples, one and two, but we're not limited to those. So a petitioner could come with something that has a different example, that doesn't fit under one and doesn't fit under two. But we could consider that, right? And have it fulfill standard A, even though it doesn't fit under one and doesn't fit under two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that just goes back to that whole concept that a very, someone who's got, it goes back to an old sort of common law maxim that land is unique, and every piece of land is unique. And so we could come up with general rules on our zoning for our lots and the way we want our land used, but we can't anticipate every unique quality of a piece of property. And so we have to give people an option to come to us, but here's what we expect. But, you know, it's not like you, if you come up, if you've got a very specific thing that we've never thought of, you get to try to convince us. That's how that works.
So at this point, any further discussion?
I'm not suggesting we do this, but I think we all ought to be aware of the original thought on this was that we were going to have some case studies and we were going to try to apply the new rules to the case studies. And Sonia got us a packet the last time around of four cases, I think it was. I just want to make, I suggest that we just move ahead and vote on this now. I'd like to so move and with the idea, with the clear awareness of we're not going to do this, this case study, look at it. Because that's just going to delay us another month.
Greg?
My question is just about the timeframe of this recommendation, the language change and what the time, the trajectory of its applicability.
The, I mean, if the language changes here were minor enough where the, if the commission wanted it, could finalize the recommendation, the final changes could be made if the vote is there and then it would have to go to the village board.
So effectively, it could be approved as of the next village board meeting?
Yeah.
If the recommendation was announced from this meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So I think we are concluded-
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry. But if it is not, then we have to use the current standards for anything that comes before us.
Correct.
Is that correct and really can't consider this?
Right, until, until the village board acts on the recommendation, the text of the zoning ordinance remains the same, even if you've recommended the change.
Right.
So, but what I would suggest is, if it's pending, you're going to postpone a final decision if you know you're going to, might have a significant zoning change.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Correct, so if they do adopt this at their July 7th meeting- Right. And they adopt the ordinance, then the standards you would use then at the July 14th hearing would be the new standards. Right. And if they don't, then we wouldn't.
Correct.
So just a procedural question, is the intent that the situation on Scottsdale gets remanded back to us to reevaluate using these standards?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
They would have to reapply it or something.
Well, they tabled it, so no decision was made on the variation.
Oh, so it wouldn't come back to you, yeah.
Okay, right. Okay, then it would appear as if we are concluded with our discussion and therefore seeking a motion to close the public hearing on this matter and move to a-
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Let's take a roll on closing the public hearing, yeah.
All righty, Commissioner Gary?
Aye.
Commissioner Mateo?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Chairman Pachara?
Aye.
Do we need to gavel on that or no? We only need to gavel to adjourn, and you don't even need it then.
Okay. So, so we've now formally closed the public hearing on this topic of making a text amendment governing our, or changing our variation standards. And at this point, would entertain a motion with respect to the proposed language that we have before us and which we have modified over the course of our discussion. So move to, I'm sorry.
So I move that we accept the wording that we have before us plus the two modifications we discussed during the public hearing.
And do we need to say and recommend its adoption by the village board or is that assumed?
That'll be, it's, it'll be in the rec, the written recommendation, but it is assumed, yeah.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Gary, second by Commissioner Mendoza. I was, I'm sorry, Jill, I'm sorry.
Okay, any further discussion?
Sonia, would you, would you kindly call the board?
Certainly. Commissioner Gary?
Aye.
Commissioner Mateo?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Chairman Pachara?
Aye.
Motion passed, yes?
Excellent, thank you very kindly. Greg, thank you very kindly for providing us with the benefit of your perspective. Really appreciate it. I am unaware of any old business, Sonia, do we have any to address this evening?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, topic of new business. Would you, so, so under new business, we have one item on the agenda to discuss how to determine the required street yard and possible text amendments to clarify that process. So I'll attempt to summarize the genesis here. So we were, before us at our last meeting, we, we conducted a public hearing during which the question, the central question arose around how the front yard is measured in cases, in some cases, where the WPA measurements appeared to be on the surface potentially out of whack. And there was some difficulty in that particular situation and we were making assertions or assumptions about the possibility that the house was torn down after the, after the measurements were made. And so the, the purpose for this was to clarify how staff makes that measurement. It is a process that Sonia and the building staff currently uses to do this measurement, but the ordinance, there's an opportunity to codify that in the ordinance, so it removes any question going forward how that's done. So before us is, excuse me, an opportunity to discuss that. And Sonia, I guess my question to you would be, are you looking for firm direction or guidance from us tonight or is this a discussion that we want to start and conclude at a subsequent meeting?
This is just discussion that we can start. I, you know, I don't necessarily have a specific recommendation at this point, so I thought it was more of a discussion item. And then, you know, at the next meeting, we can perhaps make some more firm recommendations or I can at least come before you with a, you know, similar to how we did with accessory building height, come before you with a draft for you to discuss and then we can have a public hearing about it, you know, at-
So ultimately, it would be a text amendment requiring a public hearing and incorporated into the ordinance accordingly? Okay, great.
So we'll be changing your setback.
Okay.
Right, so, so you have before you the section from the residential districts that outlines the method for measuring street yards. And part of the discussion that we had had at the last meeting considering the appeal was what was the intent of the street yard? And so what we failed to keep into account there is that we actually do have a purpose and intent for it in our ordinance and I had not included that in our packet. So here it says that the purpose and intent of the street yards is the variability of residential setbacks from streets is identified as a noteworthy historic characteristic of Riverside and a valuable aspect of the village's status is a national register historic landscape district. Therefore, the village desires to maintain this variability and not allow it to be diminished over time as new construction in additions to existing homes are proposed. Therefore, any yard abutting a street is defined as the street yard. And then it goes on to helping to find what the minimum street yard is. And so it says here, "The minimum street yard on each lot shall be measured from the closest point of the existing principal building line, which includes the eaves, to the street line." And then it goes on to say, and this is where we kind of get into our options. Is it an "and," is it an "or?" "The street yard dimension shall be, as indicated, in one of the following manners." And it references the WPA map, so it's the closest dimension indicated on the WPA map. Then it says, "Where the WPA map does not indicate a street yard dimension or the dimension indicated on the WPA survey is not current or considered accurate." Then it says that, you know, the, the property owner may order a survey, you know, at their expense to establish what the yard is. And that then that, the street yard dimension may be the narrowest dimension as measured from a point- dimension is measured from a point on the street lot line to the principal building, based on that, that survey. Then you have another option in cases where the street yard, as established, is set back from the street lot line, so that the rear yard requirement is not met, the street yard requirement may be reduced to accommodate the required rear yard, provided that the permitted building coverage and impervious surface requirements for the zoning district are not violated. And we have another possibility where it talks about if maintaining the existing building line and meeting the required side and rear yard requirements result in a building coverage on the lot that is less than the 30% permitted, the building department shall review the proposed building or addition and allow for a reduced street yard to permit the lot to meet the maximum building coverage, provided all other yard and coverage requirements are met. Then you have where a property is demolished, the demolition permit shall indicate the dimension of the street yard before demolition. There is no street yard dimension indicated on the WPA map, the street yard shall be that which is indicated on the demolition permit as the prior structure's street yard dimension. So like in the case of the house that was taken down on Lionell, and a new house was built, the street yard was where that existing house was. That is now maintained as the minimum street yard for that lot, and so the new house could not be built any closer to the street than that previous house had been. In that case, there was really no discrepancy between the WPA map and that survey, so, you know, there wasn't any sort of differentiating in that, but that, that existing house now established moving forward what the street yard is for that, for that property. And then last but not least is where there's a vacant lot and no street yard is indicated on the WPA map, and because the vacancy is not the result of a demolition, there is no existing home to survey to establish a street yard, then the minimum street yard shall be the average depth of street yards already established along that particular block. So those are kind of moving through different scenarios, this is how we figure out what the required street yard is, to try to maintain that variability that you see throughout our streets. So you also have before you the bulk requirements table that we have in the residential zoning district where it mentions for street yards, again, it kind of reiterates what it says in the other section. It says, the existing building line as indicated on the WPA housing setback survey is surveyed between 1936 and 1953, it's available at our building department, where this document does not provide a setback dimension, or is inaccurate or out of date, a current plat of survey may be prepared and used to identify the existing building setback. I think we should probably consider making some sort of footnote to that, like we have for some of the other things, that perhaps references back to that section about minimum street yards, so that it can talk about in cases of demolitions or in some of the other things, so that doesn't get lost in the translation, as perhaps architects or such are looking at the bulk standards to figure out what they can do. They have that reference to, to those other options that you have if you can't meet, if you can't get your full building coverage, or if you can't meet the required rear yard and things like that. So that would be a suggestion I would have as part of a text amendment, would be to make sure that we reference back to section.
So my recollection of the situation that gave rise to the discussion we're having was that the WPA map measurement was believed to be by some, perhaps, in, made, done in error, or, well, let's, let's take some of the subjectivity out of it. The WPA map had a measurement. There was, we, the village staff also had in its possession a more recent.
Sure.
Survey that was done, and the process that was followed was to use that new survey, and that that trumped the WPA measurement, whatever it happened to be.
Correct.
Because it was assumed that that's, that's real, the house is there, it's current survey, that's, that's what we're going to use. And I'm, and I'm trying to find out how that is clarified here, that a current survey trumps the WPA.
Because it says, or in cases where the WPA does not indicate a street yard dimension, or the dimension indicated is not current or considered accurate.
It also states.
That the minimum street yard shall be measured from the closest point of the existing principal building line. So if it is an existing building, then that is establishing the street yard. It's not, you know what I mean? It's not saying the historical house.
Yeah, to be the, you know, to have a setback for an existing house, of course it's going to be what's there. What the rule is, is that we're going to assume that the measurement of what's there is what's on the WPA map, and you don't have to bring us a survey.
Right.
But if somebody does, because it's based on what actually is there, the survey should trump everything else, because it's what's there.
Or in this case, I'm not sure that we had an actual existing survey, but you, your staff went out and physically measured it.
Right.
Which I guess would constitute a survey of some type, right? But...
You know, because we saw that there was the discrepancy between the one plan that we had that indicated that it was 44 feet back, but we had a WPA that said it was only 22 feet setback from the property line, we had to figure out what was going on.
Right.
So, you know, I had the inspector go out and try to measure from points that would not have changed, which would be the, you know, the curb line of the street. So I measured from the curb line to the face of the building, and that did not add up to what was on the WPA, if you took the distance that it marked from the house to the property line, from the property line to the sidewalk, the width of the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk to the curb. When you added all that up, and you added up what was physically out there, those numbers were, you know, 20, 30 feet off of each other.
But again, we didn't have any verification that the old, that there hadn't been an old house there during the WPA measurement.
Doesn't matter.
And that it was torn down, and that a new house was built further back. I mean...
Right, I mean, we had a WPA survey that indicates that the setback that was on there was taken in 1941.
Correct, and we had no, we weren't given a date for when that new, that other house was built, and it looked like it could be mid 40s. I mean, we didn't have any verification that it was wrong.
Right, I mean, we did not have any record that indicated that that house had been demolished.
Well, right, but it's, it's not relevant if the house was built or torn down at whatever time it was, because the ordinance says that the street yard setback is to the existing building, regardless of what the WPA map says.
So I think that's what we're trying to make sure, because it says.
How do we clarify this?
Right.
To, to say that the street yard, your required street yard is where your house is currently, to the street property line. And I think one thing we could do to clarify is to not put the WPA as letter A. Do you know what I mean? The WPA is really the fallback, it should be the, if there's a current survey, then that's what we use.
If no current survey exists, then the street yard shall be established by the WPA map, unless the property owner wants to invest in a survey.
No, I think that it should be measured. I think that in each case, it should be established as the existing building line. I think we need a map that measures every building in the village and establishes its...
But what if that house, so, yeah, what if the house that is there presently is legally non-conform, how did we, when we, when we chose to use the WPA measurement, I mean, this language comes from that decision.
So we're not trying...
Did we not create, no, did we not knowingly create non-conformities? And is the potential there that the house that's there now is legally non-conformant?
Well, yeah, you took, it's, what you did is, the houses were all built before there were any front yard setback requirements, and you established the front yard setbacks by taking a snapshot of the village for what was existing, and said, we, we have a policy of not wanting to encroach any more than we already have out there, and that that's what, that's what the setback is. And then you have rules where there is no house there, or where you tear a house down, or where you can't establish it of this totally vacant lot, it's, we have no evidence it's ever been built on, then you do, what a lot of communities do is, you take the average of what's out there on a block.
And that's, that's fairly common.
Wait a minute, I must have been asleep at some point along the line here, because it, it says, the street yard dimension shall be as indicated in one of the following manners. And it seemed to me that we discussed that in the, in our last meeting and said, well, who determines which one is valid? And it was, we basically said it's up to the owner to pick whichever one he wants, that any one of them is going to be valid.
Well, that wasn't the conclusion of the majority of you, it tied two, too, because the, if that was the case, the owner would have gotten to do what he wanted, and he didn't get to do what he wanted. I think...
Well, it's because it was, it was a two-two vote.
Right, but I mean, when he said, we determined, I mean, it was some of you determined, and some of you didn't look at it.
Right, and I, and I, and I think that there, there is a, well, I'll express my sentiment. My sentiment is that ties go to the homeowner. In cases where, situations like this, it's, there's some question, I think the tie should, in that particular case, my, I would have said the tie in that case should have gone to the homeowner. And to Dennis's point, you know, it's, it should be indicated in one of, and...
Well, the way, and the way I thought, when this, Michael Mars and I talked about this the night this was going to happen, and when he read me the wording, I said, the way I read that is, it's the, whatever is most beneficial to the owner, it's like, that's what you say. Here are your options of how you can prove what your setback is, you pick. But staff, Sonia didn't interpret it that way, and it was my understanding from Michael that the history wasn't that staff interpreted the way I said. So I said, well, let, staff should, you know, if they interpreted that way, that's fine, they should just explain it, and then, I don't know if you had ever considered this before, but it would be up to you.
Right, and that's, that's what give rise to it, and again, it's not a question of right, wrong, or true, false.
Right, but moving forward, how do we clarify, or if we want to change course?
Right, and that's my earlier comment, is I don't see, this, I mean, I realize this is, this is the old language, right? This isn't, this is, this is what it is now.
This is what this code currently states.
And, and so I think as we can, as we talk about how to improve this, what we need to do is clarify what the methodology is, because I think this, as is, I mean, this illustrates the problem that we ran into, is it leaves open the possibility of interpretation of which one trumps the other, and, and all I ask for is if that's the methodology, let's just make it methodology, you know, clear. Otherwise, in the absence of that clarity, I would say, you know, and it's, it's not, it's not, in, in any way disrespecting, you know, staff's process. I, I would have just said, ties go to the owner.
And I think last week I said that I liked what Sonia did, because it brought her to us, and we're the ones that should be, she was more restrictive, and I think that's good, that we respond that way when there's doubt. She should bump things up to us for us to decide. But the, and also the second point I want to make is that the counterargument is, you know, the variability of residential setbacks from streets is identified as a noteworthy historic characteristic of Riverside, and is a valuable aspect for the village's status. So we shouldn't, in addition to this thing being, we should be favoring and giving the owners as much choice as possible, we should be also looking to keep that variation in the setbacks in our village. I think those are two positive things that work that way, and, well, period.
I concur. So, so the direction is, I think, I think you're, I think everyone understands what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, I think we could come up with some language.
And so what we're looking for is some, some concrete language that we can react to, that improves upon what we have here, that addresses the ask or requirement that we clarify with the methodology. So, Greg, yes?
So I'm trying to understand what was just described. So you went out and the existing house was actually further back than the WPA line said it was.
And, and we said, and staff said, you're held to what's actually there.
So if that house, so I, I know there's a few houses, there's one on Herrick, there's one on Shenstone, in which the existing houses are built at the back of the property, and they've got these massive front yards. So in that instance, if they wanted to put an addition to the front of their house, they couldn't, because it would violate the front setback. Is that what I, even though it's not violating the WPA?
Right, unless they felt it fell in with one of those exceptions.
Well, it depends on what the WPA showed. If the WPA showed, you know, that it's 100 feet setback from the front property line, and the survey shows that it's 100 feet back from the front property line, there's really no discrepancy, the setback is 100 feet back from the property line.
Sure, no, I understand that. I think in, a couple of these instances, these houses were at some point coach houses or some other accessory structure that then became houses, that probably weren't part of the WPA, and it just, it seems to create a, but I guess then here we come up to the variance issue.
Right, you'd have that.
Whether they'd be able to apply for a variance in that case, because, you know...
But you also have that rear yard thing.
Yeah, we have this.
There's that exception, yeah, where you're encroaching in the rear, right, is that?
Right, in cases where the street yard is established as setback from the street line, so that the rear yard requirement is not met.
Is not met, which would probably be the case.
The street yard requirement may be reduced to accommodate the required rear yard and provide the permitted building coverage, provided that the permitted building coverage and impervious surface limits are...
Yeah, but does that imply you're going to tear down part of the back so they can make the rear yard?
Hmm.
That's weirdly drafted.
That is oddly odd.
And I, I missed that last hearing for whatever reason, but, so is that the front porch that the person wanted?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You want to put a front porch on, and the front porch would still be behind the WPA line, but not...
Correct.
What he interpreted as a front setback.
Right, because he looked at this, and he said, ah, I can look at the, rely on the WPA. So he gave his architect the WPA, which said 20 feet setback, but he had, he gave Sonia a real survey, which said...
A previous time, for a different work, yes.
They already had on file a real survey, which showed that the building front was not where the WPA showed it, it was further back, and Sonia said, well, I've got a survey, and I, by the way, I confirmed it with my measurements. The reality is, your front yard setback is your existing house, and it's a lot more than 20 feet, and that's what I'm holding you to. He said, your ordinance said WPA, I'm appealing, and then this group split two to two, which meant her decision could not be reversed, it stood, because a tie doesn't go to the homeowner, you have to reverse her decision, and the votes weren't there to do it. So he got jammed.
Right, I'm not, I'm not suggesting an administrative change to her.
No, 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 I know, I know.
I'm just saying that this body...
No, and that's why I didn't even bring that up at that time, but I'm just saying, describing what happened, because of the deadlock, her decision was not overturned.
So the clarification of the methodology will prohibit future porch disheating of old two homes that are setback violation of the WPA, correct?
Yes.
Because you're setting it up at the front of that house.
But that is actually...
So it becomes more restricted by...
Well, no, it is, it actually is the rule now. It's just that if the, if the WPA map was correct, he still wouldn't have been able to do what he wanted to do, it's just...
Yeah, I agree, that's simple, but based upon the methodology, if you're 20 feet behind the WPA line at the front of your building, the front of the building is established in front of the house, you couldn't do a portion in the front, even though the WPA line is 50 feet in front of it.
Right, and the quarrel, the quarrel with this language is that it doesn't establish that precedence. It says you can do it one way or the other, and his, his argument was, I want to, I want to do it under this provision.
Is there, is there a future discussion, I think I heard something about...
This would, this would have to come before a publication.
Porches in general have...
Oh, no, there, there was a discussion, an extensive one about porches about five or six years ago.
Twenty ten.
Is that what we, that was close.
That's when we, that's when we adopted the ordinance that allowed existing encroaching front porches to be rebuilt to their existing footprint form.
Now, now I suppose if someone could show that maybe, maybe what happened there is a 20-foot porch got torn off years ago, they could apply for a variation and say, we're trying to reestablish a historically significant feature.
I, I think, but I, I think the issue with, with the porch that's being discussed now is that there's a difference between an enclosed porch and an open porch.
Yes, oh, yeah. No, there is.
That issue.
Yeah, there is.
And that's an item that's been tabled.
That's an issue.
And will be discussed.
Yeah, that's...
Given the outcome of this particular discussion.
Right, and I, and I, from my, my current point of view on that, though, is I don't see how the variation standards that we just talked about earlier is going to material the variation standards that we just talked about earlier is going to material impact, materially impact a rendering of an opinion on that particular.
We shall see.
I agree.
I don't think it should.
I also would acquit that. I just want to make sure the board knows that.
So, so the request is that that please get communicated to the board along with these recommendations that are-
The two nays from that evening were specifically felt that an open porch could be, should be able to be restored, but it was unanimous on the board that a closed porch should not be allowed.
Right, and the porches are dealt with in the code as far as open or closed, correct?
It says open or enclosed.
No.
It does not say that a porch can be opened or enclosed.
The argument put forth was, "We want to rebuild what was there and what was there was an open porch."
Right, that's-
Correct.
Okay, so any, any further discussion tonight on this topic? It's okay if there is, I don't want to-
So I will try to have a go at making this more clear as to how staff has been interpreting this, to make that a little bit more clear, that it's not a, you get to pick.
Right, so if there's a precedence, correct.
That there's, there's an order of operation there.
And the intent is the existing building, not what is on the WPA.
WPA, correct.
I think that's probably where most of the lack of clarity is.
I disagree with that. You know, the intent is, "We like our variability and that's something we want to preserve." So I-
Well, the other part of it, it says they don't want it to be diminished.
Yes, works both ways.
So, so-
Wait, what's not to be diminished?
It says, "Therefore, the village desires to maintain this variability and not allow it to be diminished over time."
The variability.
The variability of the setbacks.
Of the differences, yes.
So the idea that it's not going to become homogeneous with an entire block being, you know, 20 feet back from the property.
Yeah, because that's the idea, the idea behind that is, "We want the setbacks to be variable." If you create a general setback, like the average, then over time, everything is going to become more and more uniform, so you'll diminish the variability. So by using the existing snapshot of each lot as it exists, since the whole area was built up already and was variable, you're preserving variability by holding people to that line that they already have.
A typical zoning ordinance sets a specific setback. So in a typical community, you would have a setback, your R1, the setback is 20 feet. Your R2, your required setback is 15 feet. And your R3, you know-
Or it's an average of all the houses on the block.
So, you know, you have a specific line that's set and that's what applies to everybody. Because of our unique circumstance and the value that the village placed on the varying setbacks, they wanted to establish that where you're at is where you're at. And we don't want to see you coming any closer to the street than the closest point of your house already. That's what I'm taking from the purpose and intent of it and the way it was written.
And then this case involved, what does where you're at mean? Does it mean where you're at or where the WPA says you're at, even when we know it's not where you're at, right?
I'm not sure if I understand, I'm just going to write it off to sleep deprivation, but, so I'm not sure if I understand your, your argument that you just made with respect to variability and how it changes over time. I think one could argue that there was, that the WPA map establishes greater variability, because I think you said over time, everything's going to become more homogeneous. So I don't know that-
If you have a standard rule.
If you have a standard rule, so everybody's setback is 20 feet.
Like 50 feet, 100 feet, 50 feet, average on the block.
Over time, everybody's going to come closer to that front property line.
Right, and so I don't, so using that argument, I don't think, I don't think you could argue that the existing homes would preserve variability more than the WPA map. So I think there was more variability reflected there.
Well, no, I think the WPA map was, was the way that they created the snapshot. They said, "The rule's going to be what's out there now. Let's, we've got people out there that did a whole survey of the village, let's use that." Because that's what's out there now.
I think based on-
It's the best record they have.
Based on what Commissioner Lesniak was saying, I think that was utilized because they did not necessarily want to require everybody to get a survey and to prove what they're, you know, to prove it. So rather than get a survey, then the village could go, "Okay, well, the WPA said your house is 33 feet setback from the front property line. So so long as what you're proposing to do is still 33 feet setback from the property line, you know, you should be good." Or, "Your fence can't come any closer to your front property line than 33 feet because that's now the established building line for the property."
Okay, let me suggest at this point that this was a, a good discussion and it sounds like Sonia, you and Lance, you have some feedback with which you can craft some language that we can, you know, some concrete language that we can react to, rather than looking at what we have now.
And I think we can maybe simplify it a little.
I think so, there's a lot in there.
And really what we're looking for is, is being more explicit about the methodology and the establishment of precedence of, you know, how we go about it. So I think that closes off new business. Any, not showing any information items, some have come up since the agenda was assembled.
I am looking into requirements on dog runs.
Oh, I think dog runs.
Dog runs, so there would be restrictions on dog runs. So that might be something that you'll see come before you, maybe not at the next meeting, but, you know, sometime this summer hopefully I will have something for you for discussion or a text amendment to.
Just curious, what gave rise to that? Have there been inquiries from?
We've had a couple of inquiries about dog runs and we don't have any thing specific in the code. We've also had some complaints from a resident who had neighbors on either side of him both create dog runs off of their, you know, shared fence line. So without having any specific restrictions on dog runs, there's no way the village can say, "Well, sorry, you can't do that," so.
So at this point, we are at agenda item 10, adjournment. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your contributions. Good night, everyone, thank you.